Good morning. I call to order the August 29th, 2023 meeting of the Saline County Board of Commissioners, and I would ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
And I would ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for approval of the consent agenda, and today's consent agenda consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of the public forum agenda, approval of the payroll, approval of a work agreement for county employees for 2024 through 2026, also approval of the county commission minutes for August the 22nd of 2023. Are there any items that any commissioner wishes to remove or speak on? If not, I would like a motion to approve today's agenda.
It's been moved.
It's been moved, and seconded that we approve today's consent agenda. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries five zero. We're going to move right on into action items, and item number one.
2023 Recovery Month Proclamation with Valerie Hicks, CKF Senior Peer Mentor.
Good morning, Ms. Hicks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, mental health and addiction affect communities nationwide. With commitment and support, people can and do recover. And each September, Recovery Month works to promote and support the emergence of a strong and proud recovery community and celebrating the dedication of community members and service providers across the nation who make recovery in its all forms possible. And the theme of National Recovery Month is Recovery is for Everyone, every person, every family, every community. A reminder to people in recovery and those who support them that recovery belongs to all of us. And with inclusive treatment, access, support, and understanding, we can eliminate barriers to services, as well as broaden our understanding that the road to recovery is nonlinear. We advocate that there are many pathways to long-term recovery, and by understanding and supporting each unique journey, we only grow that much stronger. And each year, we ask for you all to be part of this solution. By promoting education around substance use and providing support systems for those struggling with addiction, we can create a healthier community that supports not only recovery and prevention, but helps save lives. Change starts with each one of us, and together, we can make a difference in the lives of those around us. For the above reasons, I am asking the citizens of Saline County to join me in celebrating this September 2023 as National Recovery Month.
All right. What about any activities this week or this month that is going to coincide with this?
Yep. September 9th, we do our annual recovery run. It starts at Bill Burke Park, 7:30 a.m. is a check-in. The run will start. You don't have to run if you want, you can walk as well. And if you're not interested in either one of those, we're also serving a free breakfast that morning. So that starts at 10 a.m. And then the evening of the 9th, at the 67401 location, we'll be having a speaker, free dinner, t-shirts, just kind of everybody getting together downtown to celebrate those in recovery.
Wow, sounds like a couple of meals that I don't want to miss, maybe.
Yes.
Any other comments from commissioners? I would take a motion, then.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Saline County Commission proclaim September 2023 as National Recovery Month?
Second.
It's been moved, and seconded that we proclaim September 2023 as National Recovery Month. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign, motion passes five zero. If you want to step forward, I have a signed proclamation for you.
Thank you so much.
And if you want to turn and look that way, I think he wants to take a picture, maybe.
Thank you.
Shake your hand.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks so much for coming. We'll move to item number two.
Bid award for the McReynolds and Lapsley Road Low Water Crossings with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Mr. Mater.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, I'm here to ask to have the bids awarded for the McReynolds and Lapsley Road Low Water Crossings. Sealed bids were opened in my office on August 9th at 11 a.m., and we did receive six bids, so I was very happy to see that number of bids and interest in the project. So, you should have in your packet the bid tabulations that kind of gives the details of all the bids and my estimate that I had for the project. So for this project, we did select three bridges. There's two bridges on McReynolds Road between Halsted and Fairchild's, and then one project on Lapsley Road just west of Old 81. Each location involves removing a structurally deficient bridge, regrading the road, and constructing concrete pavement through the channel section for the concrete low-water crossing. And then, of course, we'll do the seeding and erosion control through the project as well. Both of these roads are dirt roads, dead ending in agricultural farm fields, and so we've been through... We spoke with the tenants through this whole process, and everybody's very excited about the project because they really can't be using these bridges anyway because of the low posting weight. And so, but a concern is just providing the access during construction to their fields. And so, we've met with everybody, and everybody's able to get some temporary access to their fields, and so that's not an issue. Alternatives for action would be to, one, accept a bid, bid unit prices from Vogts Park Construction for the three low-water crossing locations; two, to accept a bid from a different contractor; or three, reject the bids and direct staff to the wishes of the board. Staff recommends accepting the unit prices from Vogts Park Construction for an estimated cost of $346,603. Funds for this project were asked to be taken out of the 127 account, which is a special highway construction. This account has a current uncomer balance of a little over $2.6 million. The McReynolds Road locations did receive a KDOT cost share match through the 2023 Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Fund for an award of 85% of the construction cost, up to $350,000, and an additional $50,000 for removing Lapsley Road. So that was that program there, so I was very happy to receive those funds. And I think the reason why we did receive those funds is because the, you know, KDOT and really Kansas in general is really looking at lowering our inventory of bridges in the state. So for the state of our size and our population, we've got a large number of bridges, and so because we're removing three bridges, not access, but just removing the three bridges, and this is when I'm talking a bridge, it's the federal definition of a bridge, so any structures longer than 20 feet. So they're excited about that. Any questions?
I will start to my right with questions or comments. Commissioner Wees?
I know that the farmers in that area are excited about this. This would make it so much easier for them to gain access and get the equipment in that they've been limited in the past, so I'm all in favor of this.
Commissioner Shadwick, nothing? Commissioner Sparks?
Just a quick question here, is like the funding coming back from the federal government there, does that go back into your account here?
Yeah, so to clarify, the funding is state funds coming from KDOT, so this is one of the few state funds, state programs that we're doing. So, yeah, so that's why I'm kind of asking to be taken out of the 127 account instead of the 125, is because most of the funds are going to come, you know, it's a reimbursement program, so we'll pay everything out of the 127, and then the greatest majority of that will come back into the 127.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Mr. Hay?
No, sir.
I've got a couple also, Justin. Number one, low-water crossings means we're going to eliminate the bridge and put pavement down where the water can run across the road without destroying the road. Is that the purpose of?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so they can get through, you know, because we're dealing with tractors and, you know, everything farm equipment is going to be crossing this. You know, we're going to put the concrete pavement at the level of the flow line of the channel, so we're completely getting that way of the water and letting the water go through.
Potentially could still be a road closed for a short period of time?
Yes.
But we're not going to wash the road out?
Correct, 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 yes.
Also?
We will have to put some signing up for, you know, don't enter, you know, our regular signing for low-water crossings, you know, each one of these locations as well.
Also, the selected construction company, I haven't heard their name before that I recall.
They're out of Newton. They do a lot of concrete pavement work.
And where's their location?
It's in Newton.
Newton, okay.
Yeah, they're out of Newton. I did have one experience when I worked for McPherson County, and it was a very good experience, and my assistant county engineer has had a couple of experiences with them, and they've all been good.
One more comment, and this is nitpicking a little bit, but when we call the 127 account the special highway construction account, and there isn't anything about this project that has anything to do with a highway. My point is, would it behoove us to rename the account, maybe, like a special road and bridge construction? Or I'm nitpicking on that, but...
You're nitpicking on that. Okay. I believe those names are actually statutory, but they're permitted to be expended in this fashion, so I think that name is what it says in statute.
Whenever we get reimbursements, you know, from FEMA or from any federal state program, the reimbursements are able to go, that's what we put into this account.
Thank you for reminding me on the nitpicking, I'll be careful. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the commission approve RFA 2023-171 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved, and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-171. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number three.
Approval of amended Axon contract with Lieutenant Jeremiah Hayes with the Saline County Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Lieutenant Hayes.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here today to talk about a new Axon contract, an amended Axon contract. Back on May 2nd, the commission approved the sheriff's office contract with Axon for the purchase and implementation of a new body cam system and a new interview system for the new jail and for the corrections division. That was, funds for that were going to be used for the jail project. That covered the five-year cost of both systems. That cost was, for the body worn camera system, was $242,304.39, and for the interview room system was $71,244. The sheriff's office planned, I know Sheriff Solon came through the budget, was planning to use 2024 TIP funds to bring patrol into that Axon system as well in 2024, and that proposal was going to be a five-year payment plan, with the first payment in 2024 is $85,015.60 with an annual cost of about the same for the next four years. While we've been doing this transition, moving into the new facility, we identified a couple reasons that we would need to implement that sooner. One reason is the current system that we have has been plagued with a lot of technical difficulties, which makes it difficult to manage the current system that we have. Body cameras breaking, the server that we have trying to get digital media produced to the court system has been difficult. I know Captain Hughes has had a lot of difficulties with it. The other issue that we had is moving into that new facility, we would have to bring that server system with us, and things that we would have to do is we'd have to find a place to put it, run all new wires, we'd have antennas that we would have to mount on our brand-new building only to take them down a few months later when we get the new Axon system in 2024. So after talks with Axon, they have, they are willing to combine both contracts and to install the entire system, and then delay that payment to 2024 for the patrol side of that system. So that's what I was here for today, is to assign that amended contract so we can start that process. They are willing to come in November and install everything before we move in by the end of the year. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Start with my left, Commissioner Hay?
No, sir.
Mr. Sparks?
Yeah, I think it's a good move to go ahead and get this accomplished before we move in. I mean, why go with the old and then go move to the new? I mean, let's just get it all done right now, so, yeah, I think that'd be a great deal. Thank you.
Commissioner Wees?
One question, you say that they would forego until 2024 the patrol portion of the system?
Yes.
Payment.
The payment plan, yeah. They would...
Is that the body worn cameras, is that patrol, or?
Body worn cameras and dash cam fleet system, so we're getting all new dash cams for the cars, for the fleet cars, and for the body worn cameras.
Okay, so they're foregoing the $242,000?
That is just for the corrections side. What you see there are body worn cameras, so initially, there was two contracts. There was the one for the corrections division, which had all body worn cameras that we were going to pay with the jail funds, and that would be paid five years upfront with the jail project. Then in 2024, we were going to bring in the patrol side to the system, and that would be an annual payment, which is where you see the $85,000. So they're proposing to combine the two contracts. We would still use the jail project funds to cover the corrections side, and then the TIP funds for the patrol side.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shadwick?
Makes sense.
I agree. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve RFA 2023-172 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-172. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll move to item number four.
Lease for 203 North 10th Street with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Commissioners. So, the item before the commission this morning is a potential lease on the former Kansas Works Building at 203 North 10th Street here in Salina. So as the commission is aware, we have been doing quite a bit of work on this building over the last year to accommodate new courtrooms, and that has constrained a number of spaces in this building. We've actually had some folks move out of this building, and we did a renovation over at the former juvenile center on North 9th Street to accommodate some offices. We've continued to experience space constraints in this building, and we have agreed with the city of Salina to do a joint study during 2024 to look at the future of this building and neighboring buildings, including the Health Department, the current sheriff's office jail facility, and Memorial Hall. As part of that, we just happened to notice a big sign on the Kansas Works Building that said it was for sale. It was sold at a public auction, it was purchased by a local investor, and we entered into some conversations with them about a potential lease. So the item before you would be to lease that facility for one year. Not quite sure when the lease would begin, because the lease, there are some HVAC repairs that need to be made to that building before we would actually want to take possession of it, so it could begin as early as September 1 if everything gets done. I think that's highly unlikely, because they were just getting the contractor in there this week. So I think it's more likely that the lease would begin October 1 and run for a 12-month period. We do not have a currently identified use for the building. We have been in conversations with a couple of departments that are currently in the city-county building about the potential for them to relocate. We have one that is interested, but need to iron out what the IT routing would be and those sorts of things. So the most likely use to start with would be for storage until we can accommodate some other things and make some future plans. But the value of having the building, at least for the first year, is throwing it into the mix of all the other downtown buildings that we would be evaluating and decide whether we had a need for it in the future or not. If not, we could let the lease go. This has all come up since budget talks, of course, and so there's not a budget authority either this year or next year to do this, so we would be moving some things around for the remainder of this year, assuming an October 1 lease start, that could be accommodated out of commissioner contingency. For next year, for 2024, the total yearly cost, including taxes, insurance, and assuming a full 12-month period with an inflator in October, we're talking about $40,000. And so what staff would propose on that? There's a $100,000 plan to transfer to CIP in the budget for 2024. We would reduce that to 60 and use the other 40 to pay for the lease costs. So it's just an option that we are presenting to commissioners at this time. I'd be happy to answer questions and take any direction from the commission.
Start with Commissioner Sparks.
Got a couple of questions, is that it's like if we're looking at this as a, for storage facility, since we don't have any other avenues right now, have we looked at any other storage facilities that would be available for storage, whatever it might be?
The answer is no. The principal value of this building, I would say, is not storage, it's location. I mean, it is really the only reason we're having this conversation is because of where that building is located. So, yeah, I mean, if we get into a critical storage need, I'm aware that there are other storage facilities in the community, and we can certainly, certainly look at that.
And something else is that with all the other buildings that we have in our possession already with roof problems, has there been any issues with the roof problem over there already?
The new owner has had the roof evaluated, and the roofing contractor has said that it looks like that roof still has a number of years of good life left on it. So the major issue is the HVAC.
Okay. Mr. Hay?
I think location is the biggest factor in this, for us to be able to use. I know that you've looked at several different departments to put, you know, to ask if they would consider or, you know, at least look at it, so that's about all I have. Like I said, location, I think, is a real key to this, being as close as it is to where we could, we can manage whatever we got.
Commissioner Shadwick?
I think it's just another piece of the puzzle in our conversations with the city that makes it helpful. So, and you're not signing a long-term lease anyway, so...
Commissioner Wees?
Well, the way things have been going, I think we need to increase the commissioner's contingency fund back to the original, but two questions, terms of the lease, will it have an inflator, guaranteed inflator worked into that, and is there any possibility that verbiage lease to buy might be included in that?
The answer to those questions are both yes. So the lease as drafted does have a 3% annual increase unless CPI is higher than that, and then it's a renegotiation. Have had a conversation with the property owner about the potential for a lease to own. He is open, or they are open to that discussion. They wanted to, because they've just recently purchased the building, they said they're not interested in selling it right now. They'd like to lease it for a minimum of one year and then be open to those discussions about a lease to buy.
Well, I, I think, like Commissioner Shadwick said, it's just another tool in the toolbox going forward, so.
My comment is that there's no denying that we need, we need room. The difficult part here is, I, I wish that it happened a year earlier. A year earlier, I mean, we've got our juvenile court that we've moved downstairs. We've moved four different departments, three different departments around. It sure would have been a good piece to the puzzle now, but we've already spent a lot of money refabricating this building to make it work for some departments. But I, I think, I certainly wouldn't be opposed to a two-year lease, to be honest with you, because it's going to take us a little while to get it figured out, what we're going to do with it, which department we potentially could move there. I'm for that. I assume that these, the per square foot prices compatible to what anything else in the, in the community is. I, I'm for it. I certainly don't want to take possession or start the, the lease until the building is 100% occupiable. That's, that's my opinion. So that's where I'm at with it. It's the location, we're not going to find something closer to this building than that, I don't think. There, there's no buildings available. But we're out of room. Simple as that. Either that, or we add on to the courthouse, and I think that could get pretty expensive. Don't want to tackle that right now. Is there any public comment? Seeing none?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, would it be, would it be in our best interest then, since you, like I said, you made your recommendation, should we try to go for, or have a two-year lease instead of just a one? And that way there, we got possession of that building to be able to do what we need to do in that length of time.
My only comment on that is, somebody's not going to lease this from under us. I mean, I mean, we're still going to have the rights of first refusal of anything that comes up after this anyway. And maybe the city takes this over at some point. I mean, so, yeah, I think it's a little premature to do, to do that. I, I get what you're saying, but they're not going somewhere else.
Okay. Yeah. I, is there a right, we could get, get that written into our contract on the right of refusal, once the one-year lease, is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, I mean, they're going to look.
It does have a renewal on it.
I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm, I'm okay with that. I, I, so, I'll bring it back to the commission for action then.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve RFA 2023-174 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve RFA 2023-174. Before I take the vote, I do want to make one conditional or additional comment, and that is regarding the commissioner's contingency line item. I've heard it said by some members of the public that there seems to be, that we're able to get money from wherever we want it, whenever we want it, from another line item. And we've continued to knock down the commissioner's contingency fund over years from where we started, I think, a few years ago. $100,000 is, what, 25,000 now, 20,000? I think those are the kind of things that we maybe need to look at and continue to chop down some line items. Do not have, we do need rainy day funds, but maybe not so much. So something to think about for the next time around on that. That having all been said, I will ask for the vote. All those that are in favor of approving RFA 2023-174, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. We'll move to informational items.
County Administrator update with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning again, Phil.
Good morning again. Just two items to discuss this morning. First, I was asked a few meetings ago, probably maybe three weeks ago, about the status of Magnolia Road west of 135 over to Centennial, and I finally had a chance to sit down with city manager and get an update. The city unfortunately did not get the state grant that they had applied for, for that. And so the city has started shopping that around as a legislative item going into next year's session. You know, I think there is substantial interest between the city, the county, the airport authority, and K-State Salina that we could all sort of work on that during the legislative session and hopefully get an appropriation. We'll see, but that's the current, the current thinking on that. The second item is just a reminder for folks that Monday is Labor Day, and so county offices will be closed on Monday. So just wanted to remind folks of that.
All right, item number two.
Commissioners' comments?
Anyone have anything?
Nope.
Number three.
Announcements?
I think you covered it. Next Monday is a holiday, so. All right, we'll move into concept discussion.
A discussion of the bidding process for 2024 patrol vehicles with Captain Jim Hughes with the Salyne County Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Captain Hughes.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I'm here today, and I'm not quite sure if it's a continuation of, or another discussion about challenges of vehicles and procurement of such with the sheriff's office. So for the past two years, I think we're all aware, we've experienced difficulties with purchasing vehicles due to lack of availability and the manufacturers changing their order and production times. And if you recall, March of this year, a point of discussion while I was here with an RFA, obtaining vehicles was getting aggressive to find solutions to possibly purchasing vehicles earlier than later. So I've done some research this year, and, and I found that as of August 14th, I've received some information from Ford dealership in Kansas City, as well as one of our vendors who outfits our vehicles. Ford continues to be frustrating. At this point in time, the dealership in Kansas City is advising that the information they're getting is Ford is not going to produce, produce a police package vehicle for 2024. So if you want a police package vehicle for 2025, you need to be ordering it now, because 2024s are not going to be produced. There is a possibility they may run 2023s a little bit longer into 2024. So basically, you'd have like a 23 and a half, but they're not really quite sure on what that's going to look like and if that's going to be the case. This is coming from a dealership in Kansas City. So Dodge, right now, they're open for 2024. This has been kind of consistent, we've seen in the last two years. You have to order basically in the fall, because they start building and outfitting their tool line in November and December. So if you want to get a Dodge vehicle, or at least get a bid into Dodge, now's the time to do it. And if we wait much longer till the first year, we're going to run the issues that we did last year, where we're scrambling, looking for vehicles, and hoping somebody has something on our lot. Chevy, they have not been real competitive in the past, but to be fair and transparent to them and to everybody else, they're about on the same timeline as Dodge is. So if we want to keep Chevy in the process, or at least in the bid arena, we need to start thinking about getting our bids in now, as opposed to sooner and later. Now, I did speak to Lon MacArthur about the 2024 process. They said it was kind of news to them. They had not heard specific information pertaining to the 2024 vehicles, but they do not, they do know that the bids are not being accepted now, or they're not, Ford's not accepting orders. And Ford does not know if they're going to do that or not. They had not heard any information specifically to yes or specifically to no, nor did they knew what the cost may be if they even offered to bid something in 2014 or 2024. And so I had them check to see if we could still obtain brand-new 2023 police vehicles, if we could still order those, because there was a little discussion if they're doing the 2023 and a half or whatnot. And I was told that they are not accepting 2023 brand-new vehicle orders. So in a nutshell, the reason why I'm here is to seek some guidance, recommendations from you going forward with 2024. We have some conflicting information from two Ford dealerships, and by no means am I saying one knows more than the other. But I'm simply saying that with the information gathered, it's still unknown what 2024 is going to look like with Ford, as far as if they're building a vehicle, the availability, and at this point in time, the pricing. Dodge and Chevy are now accepting orders for 2024 vehicles. They're going to start building those in November and December for delivery after the first year. So if we don't start bidding with at least Chevy or Dodge, or getting some bids out there, it's very possible that when the first year comes around, we're not going to have those to order. You know, the sheriff's office, at the end of the day, they desire to have competitive bids from vendors who can meet specs. We want the process to be fair and open. But if we're proactive and put the bids out now, or are prepared to do it by tomorrow, we can ensure that we can get some proposals from, from Dodge and potentially Chevy. But if we run the bids for, for a month, it's very possible we're going to eliminate Ford, because they don't know at this point in time what, what's happening. If we wait till the end of the fall, or at the first year, like we've traditionally done, Ford may be a player. They may come out with some new information. If they do, great. If they don't, we've lost opportunity more than likely to, to get our Dodges or Chevys. So in, in a nutshell, I'm, I'm just kind of looking for some guidance of, of what the commission would like us to do. If we'd like to wait and, and see what happens and what shakes out in the future and potentially be in the same position that we have been, that's an option. If we go forward sooner than later, it's very possible we may eliminate our friends at Ford, but we're guaranteed to, to get competitive bids from, from Dodge and possibly Chevy.
Well, bidding and buying are two separate processes. I mean, we can put things out for bid, and depending upon when they come back, that what we would have to buy, I mean, that's, that's on down the line. To get conflicting information from two different dealerships of the same product is a little bit concerning to me. I, I truly don't have a problem with them going out for bids now, depending upon when we would have to take possession and would have to pay for it. That would be an issue. I have one more question real quickly, and that is, what is, what's the difference between buying a, an SUV versus a, a police vehicle? Is it just the size of the motor?
Not necessarily. The, the police package vehicles, they come with towing capability. They come with a heavier alternators. They come with some heavier hoses, the brakes. Just, the motor is not necessarily different, but a lot of the components that are heavier duty that, that police vehicles inherently need for their use, they're beefed up, for lack of better terms.
And have an ability to take more abuse, is what we're really saying.
With, with a broad stroke of a brush.
I, I get it. I mean, if you're out chasing somebody down a county road at 90 miles an hour, I mean.
Yeah.
You hit a pothole.
That's a 30,000-foot view. You know, I'm not by any means an engineer mechanic, but, but they're a little beefier, a little heavier duty. But as far as the motor, I mean, the motor, I think, pretty much the same. It's an interceptor motor. But to answer, or maybe give you some information or some insight on your first question, sir. So, yeah, if we put those out for bid now, I understand what you're saying, bidding and purchasing. But if we put them out for bid now, and traditionally run that for 30 days, is that... So we ran out for 30 days. I understand we don't have to buy them until the first year, but if we put the bid out now, and Ford has nothing to offer within the 30 days, then we obviously can't purchase that. So that was, that is my concern.
When, when is our date that we would normally roll these vehicles over? What, what, what date is that? Is that September 1st? Is it, is it August the 1st?
Well, we roll our vehicles over traditionally when we can get the new ones delivered. So we're looking at 2024 to replace these vehicles. When we order the vehicles, traditionally, we get the bids out the first year, February, March, they come back in, and then June, July, August of 2024, we would get our cars. So the cars we want to get rid of in 2024, if we traditionally do it, would be, you know, we get rid of them in July, August. So there's like a seven-month lag time. Well, in 2023 and 2024, we, we've experienced eight, nine, almost a year lag time. We just got our, we just got some of our 2023 vehicles delivered this year.
Well, I assume the ones that we're going to try to get rid of are at least 150,000 miles or so.
Yes. And, and I don't have that list right in front of me, but we got some that are dating back to 2018 with, you know, 150,000 miles on them. And by the time we get our vehicles, some of those vehicles will have 200,000 miles on them. And some of the ones we're looking at now that might have 80,000 or 90,000 miles on them, will have the 150,000 miles on them by the time they get done doing it. Now, I'm not advocating purchasing any vehicles right now. I'm just saying, we need to get, if we get the bids out now, we could be potentially eliminating somebody. If we wait till the end of the year, we could be potentially not finding vehicles.
How many are you talking about?
We have 290,000 and change preliminary approved in, in the budget. We would like to try to get five, but vehicle increase, I do know that Dodge has taken a $2,000 increase per vehicle, and then I don't know what the increase on the equipment's going to be. So it could be four to five. We just have to get the most bang for the buck we can out of the money we have preliminary set aside.
Mr. Shadwick?
Yeah, I don't think that this is so preliminary. It's only a couple of months.
Great.
Yeah.
Mr. Weiss?
Well, I'm, I'm sure if there was a, a higher profit to be made, Ford would be putting their police packages out there, but they're able to sell their vehicles now without having to provide the police package. So for us to wait around, hoping that they become a player, could cost us losing out on the, on getting our cars in 2024. So, one question. There was a outfitter out of Wichita you've used in the past, I believe?
Yes.
Have, are they able to get vehicles readily, or?
So what they traditionally do is, when the bids go out for the vehicles, they have a relationship with several different car dealerships across, across Kansas. And so, you know, I don't think they, per se, sells the car. They go out and they get a relationship with other dealers. And so through that vendor, I got the information from Shawnee Ford, and, and so they're getting that information as well.
When, when these go out for bid, is it a complete package, turnkey, ready to go?
Yes, sir.
So would this, Wichita outfit be available to bid on these?
If, if they, yes, they would. Yeah. So the way we've done it traditionally, yes, sir. That's true.
Okay. Mr. Sparks?
No, I don't have any. I just want to commend you guys for looking forward and approaching it at this direction. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Hay?
All I have to say is, I agree with Commissioner Shadwick and Commissioner Vidrickson that, you know, a bid's a bid, not a, not a buy. Let's, you know, let's, let's get it out there and see what we got and what we can purchase and what's going to be on the line at the time. So.
I agree. The consensus that I'm hearing here is that, that you proceed with the, the bid process, and we'll get, gather information and see what goes from there. I, I will take it a step further, and I've mentioned this 20 or 30 times over time. I think this organization, being Salyne County, needs a purchasing procurement agent. We need to do purchase for the entire county, all products. I, no offense to you, but for you to be spending time as a sheriff's deputy and law enforcement officer to try to run down cars, that's not what I like seeing you have to do. But somebody has to do it.
Sure.
I think we need a purchasing agent. End of conversation. So proceed with your, your bid procurement, and I think is what I'm hearing, is unless someone says something different.
Yep. Thank you, gentlemen.
There you go. All right, that looks like the, the end of the line today. One thing that I had on my mind that someone has approached me about, or more than one someone, and we've talked about it many times, that is... talked about it many times, that is moving our meeting time. And I think maybe it's time to look at that again, not to move our meeting times, period, but once a month, once a quarter, once every eight weeks, that we have an evening meeting, you know, five o'clock or, I think it's something we should toss around, do some more homework on it, look at it, have that one meeting a month, or like I said, it could be every, once a quarter. I don't, but there needs to be that one evening meeting perhaps that would satisfy many of our constituents. So we can put that on for a study session or whatever we want to talk about at some point in the future. Anyone else? I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. We adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you for watching.